Okay, it's recording and streaming.
Okay. County City Council for August 10, 2020 is now in session. Roll call, please.
Council President, Mr. Arquero.
President.
Mr. Emery.
Yeah.
Mr. Gah.
Here.
Mr. Kozeski.
Here.
Mrs. Ledford.
Yeah.
Mrs. McBoy.
Here.
Mr. Moiseo.
Here.
City Manager, Mr. Hockaday.
Here.
Finance Director, Mr. Williams.
Here.
And Assistant Law Director, Mr. Newcomb.
Here.
Hey, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes of July 27, 2020. Are there any alterations or corrections? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
A second.
Second by Mr. Emery.
Mr. Arquero.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozeski.
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford.
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Okay, the meeting minutes for July 27 have been approved. Move on to citizen comments. Has anybody received any citizen comments?
Mr. Arquero, I did receive an email about a week ago regarding trash receptacles along the creek. Citizen emailed me and he'd been kayaking and he really appreciates what they've done down there, but he noticed there's not any trash cans available to dispose of waste. And he noticed that there was some waste along the banks, specifically by Woodworth Road.
Did you forward that to Mr. Hockaday?
I'm gonna forward it now.
Okay. Anybody else have any citizen comments?
A lot of good comments about Malik Park and they, everybody says, "Thank you," and they say, "Keep up the work."
Very good. It does look good. Good job there. Okay, anybody else? If not, move on to communications.
I have none this evening.
Okay, does council have any communications? Okay, if not, move on to reports of our administration, beginning with City Manager, Mr. Hockaday.
Thank you, Council President Arquero. Couple things, kind of before I get into the meat and bones of it, I just want to say congratulations to Truck World. In case you didn't notice, in a very ungrandiose fashion, they did their soft opening over the weekend. So you are able to go in there and, you know, if you go inside, you may still see them assembling a shelf or two. But they are ostensibly open. They plead on having a larger ribbon-cutting official ceremony probably closer to Timber. Give them an opportunity to kind of work some of the kinks out. Their large pole sign is still not fully installed yet. So they have a couple of things that they need to touch up before they're ready for kind of their official open. But you want to go check it out, it is open and congratulations to Gary Burke and his entire team there. Kind of a monumental effort to get that open, tons of improvements, even to the public right-of-way and public intersections. I think they've done a tremendous job and I look forward to their success as well as some future plans out there. So really exciting stuff. Had a Utilities Committee meeting a while back. We also had a Planning Commission meeting. I did include in my report a communication from the Planning Commission. You'll see an email from Mindy. I included the entire email to me as well as the attachment in my manager report. Largely focused on Ben, which they've worked on for several years and they have it and as close to as a format as they can get it. It does need to be placed into an ordinance format for council. But they wanted to submit it to council in order to get a feedback from city council on some of the provisions that they've made. I can tell you, I sincerely appreciate the efforts of all the Planning Commission members. They've worked very hard on this for a very long period of time to get it as close to correct. It's just one of those really tough subjects to define in law and we want to make it accessible. We want to not be a hindrance to business, particularly the hospitality business, which we know is going to be struggling here probably for the next couple of years with the current COVID-19 situation. At the same time, create reasonable balances in neighborhoods that have full-time residents living in them as well. And the circumstances under which it would be permissible. So it's a, it's a tough needle to thread. I think they've done a great job. And this is something I'd either refer to a committee of council or possibly introduce it as something at our next work session for council to take a look at and review. But I did include the entirety of it in my report. So you can take a look at that. Dredge material facility is continuing to move forward. We kind of have a next phase of plan, include some clay cap. With some feedback from HCW, who's an environmental consultant and has been submitted to National for their review as well. And we're pending their comments and review on that. So we continue to make progress on the design there. OPWC Chestnut and Middle, if you've driven up and down them, you realize that they're probably substantially complete with the exception of the section in front of the schools, which we have final design on. And TT should have sent out quantities and final design to Koski for them to give us some additional pricing on the enhanced version of that intersection in front of the school. So maybe here in the next week, I'll be able to get something to keep for consideration as well. So they've moved forward very nicely on that. Important things we did receive, notice that round 35 OPWC is going to move forward. I've given some preliminary consideration to it. I'll make my formal recommendation. But the first thing is, we have our water filter improvement project for which we've received an approval for WSLSRA loan funding. That's about a $1.5 million project. I would highly recommend that we submit on round 35 for, to offset a balance, a portion of that balance with OPWC. Obviously, we get to apply for two grants. There's two, there's a kind of a division down the middle of OPWC. There's skip dollars, state capital improvement dollars, those funded funds that voters and taxpayers have approved over the years. And then there's also what's called the Local Transportation Improvement Program, LTIP. Funds are derived from a portion of gasoline tax collected at the statewide level. I think anticipate reasonably that that number is going to be smaller statewide than it has been in the past due to COVID and people traveling less and less fuel consumption. So typically, we submit one on both sides. And we really, you know, we need to turn something around for our preliminary application. It's going to be due September 15th. So I will probably cover those final project recommendations at the September work session and get it authorized at the subsequent council meeting. But I just wanted to let you know that's out there and forthcoming. Sewer interceptor cleaning has been green-lighted for, they're doing some setup and prep work and that's going to be underway here probably within the next week. ODOT Broad and Lake, we get this question all the time about some of the manholes. Manholes will be adjusted. They've gone through, they've measured them all. Different heights, they are cast differently. I anticipate some of those castings, according to Jonathan Dutte, the managing engineer for ODOT, to start coming in middle towards the end of September and those adjustments will come in. We have added some cold patch and notified ODOT of some that are exceptionally low, that are kind of a hazard to motorists. You know, while we wait for the new ones to be installed and adjusted. So they have, they have taken care of several of those. So if there's an issue, please just let me know and I'll pass it along. So your good news for the day. So I'm trying not to make it all bad news in 2020. We did receive our ODOT Small Cities Preliminary Notice of Award for Broad Street. This is between State and Jackson is the concrete section that is in terrible repair and shape. It's about 40 years old and has obviously met its useful life. So the city has received a preliminary notice of funding for $1,796,237. That is a 95.5, 95% ODOT grant, 5% municipal match for the replacement of that. Now you go, wow, that's a big number, a big number. And the overall project is just over $2 million. But it does include the stormwater underneath, all cat basins, everything else. They all need to be fully, there's, it's, it's well beyond its useful life. So for State, ODOT fiscal year 2024. So, you know, actively applying for this project, we applied for last year and were unsuccessful and we applied for it this year and were successful and got noticed today. So very excited about that. That's a big deal. Marching forward on some of the bad roads. So those are all the major pieces. Obviously, I included the dredge update materials. I also included the monthly reports for police and fire as well. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hockaday?
Just, I have a quick question. It's Tammy. Jim, I'm sorry, I missed what you said about the two projects you were thinking about putting in with those WRSLA and the other one. And what was the other one?
Okay, so, so WERSLA dollars, WRSLA is a drinking water improvement loan funds operated by the Ohio EPA. We've had nominated and been awarded the loan dollars to do that project. And that is replacement of our drinking water systems filtration material, including the drains. And we did the tour, I believe, down at the drinking water facility where we talked about taking those filter media out and putting the profile drains. Project, we currently, March, our nomination was accepted for that project. So we qualified for the blended rate loan fund for the entirety of the project. But the entirety of the project is about 1.5 million. My foundation was, well, I pulled the trigger on the loan, but I would prefer to offset it with a portion of grant. So we're not trying to pass through and eat all that indebtedness on it. So then the whole COVID thing happened and OPWC round 35 was significantly delayed. About a week ago, OPWC announced they are going to have a round 35. And that those pre-applications are going to be due, in our case, to the county engineer by September 15th of this year. So my suggestion to council is we load up the skip version, the state capital improvement portion dollars that we would seek against the water treatment plant filtration project. And then I haven't kind of discerned what we're going to do on the LTIP side. Because there was a lot of question early on whether that was even going to happen and we still don't know how much is going to be there. So we'll have to identify what project we want to apply that to, but it's probably going to be smaller in scope because it will be less dollars. Obviously, I think-
I'm sure if you've had something already pinpointed for that.
Well, we got plenty of choices on infrastructure to fix.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Choices sometimes. But yeah, we have a couple and it's just, I've been trying to get a sense, and I did have a brief conversation with Tim Martin last week, what his feeling was going to be, because there's kind of two elements to it. How much money is there in aggregate? How much competition is there going to be for that money?
Yeah.
At this point in 2020, for that question, there are more questions than answers. I would probably recommend a smaller LTIP project and the couple that come to mind is some bigger dollar ones that are, that really need to be addressed. We have Main Street through the downtown that's been on our list for a couple of years. We've applied a couple of times before. Unsuccessful. And then the other one that comes to mind that we've also applied for before and been unsuccessful is Gateway. Particularly where it butts up to Route 7 on the eastbound lanes headed towards the schools. That is a very expensive repair because it's not just milling fill because there's signal loop detectors in there. That means when you pull your car up, there's little sensors in the roadway that can tell whether there's a car there and it actuates the signals. Those are really expensive to resurface over and if you look at that asphalt, it's in terrible shape. To the point where it's almost unmaintainable. And it is out there by the schools, which, you know, we think about some of the safety hazard issues related to that. So those, those would be the two that come to mind. I just have to kind of wade back through the numbers we prepared in prior rounds and see which one I think is going to be a better fit in this round because of the fewer dollars that are involved.
Okay. Well, when you said September 15th, and I'm thinking, that's like soon.
I'll give you my final recommendation by the work session in September and then we can pass it that first meeting in September.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hey, are there any other questions? I did have one. Regarding the ODOT project, Jim. Did they say what the scope of that was going to be or is it just the roadway? Going to include lighting sidewalks and traffic signals?
Yeah, we prepared the, we prepared the scope of that. So it is the roadbed that includes the intersection of Broad and State. Traffic signals, obviously, all the pedestrian signals that, as you know, are in questionable shape. The sidewalks curbing, stormwater system. And I did also include in there the city-owned street lighting that goes through that underpass area. I'm sure you're all aware, we've had so many vehicle strikes on those street lamps. They're, they're pretty old. We cannot get the bases. We have to have the bases custom manufactured now. When one gets run over or broken, it's incredibly expensive for the city to maintain. And then it looks terrible because, you know, we don't want to spend $6,000 on a base that we don't know whether we're going to need or not. So when it happens, it waits for two months until one's cast. So it's kind of a soup to nuts, replacement of everything that is city-owned within that right-of-way. That's, that's street-related and that includes the stormwater.
Okay, very good. Congratulations on obtaining that as well. And then the final thing I had was regarding the manhole covers. Did you say that the contractor was responsible for doing some fill in the ones that are deep or was that the city's responsibility?
Yes. Now, you know, there was one that was really bad on Broad Street. I think it was about four inches low. I just had our crews go do it before somebody hurt themselves significantly. My only concern is covering them up and then the contractor not seeing them when they come back. So we have gone through the proper process of notifying ODOTs. Jonathan Dutte is the managing engineer and I've shared several emails with him about some of the problem or concerned manholes. And they said they would take a look at them and put some temporary fill on them if necessary. Of course, I offer, you know, if you want the city to do it, we can run out. But just don't forget they're there. So, because I don't want them covered over in the tractor not seeing them.
The one on Lake Road, they did mark it quite well, the one that was filled in. So if we could possibly do that, that might even help Mrs. Ledford's problem too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With a cone or something.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else for-
Mr. Hockaday, is, is this a kind of unusual that they would wait that long to adjust the manhole covers?
No. And the reason why is the final surface, the final height of the wear-in course isn't determined until they put it down. They went through and they measured each one. They have a different rise height out of the manhole and they are custom cast. So East Jordan Iron Works will then produce each one of these manholes and then they're delivered. And when they're delivered, they get installed. Pre-order them because you don't know what the final height is going to be. It does change.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for the city manager? Now, we'll move on to Finance Director, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, President Arquero. I emailed council the end-of-month reports yesterday. Hopefully, you received them and had a chance to review them. I wanted to cover today, though, just the, the second half real estate settlement that we received. It is, of course, a little bit lower than the first half. The first half was about 1.3 million. This second half settlement is always lower, but it is about 934,000. We received nearly 900,000 in millage revenue and we received another 21,000 in special assessment revenue. We anticipate another 95,000 in reimbursements from the state for non-business credits, about 32,000. Homestead, about 57,000 and owner occupied credit, about another 5,000. But what I wanted to talk to you about today is something I've talked to you about before. The Special Assessment Retirement Bond Retirement Fund. In the past, we've had to advance monies or delinquent parcels from the sewer fund. So in 2013, we advanced about 23,000, about 10,600 in 2014, another 30,000 in 2015, another 9,000 in 2016. So that's a total advance of $72,906. Because we weren't sure that we may collect these funds at some future point, we didn't want to make it a permanent transfer. But this Special Assessment Fund has, this is the last year of collection. So we began the year with a fund balance of about 5,000. We collected about 35,600. The debt portion on this fund was $47,773, which left a deficit in this fund of $7,077. So if we take that deficit and add it to the advances that we've already advanced, we're looking at a total of $80,041.58. This entire amount will have to be converted as a transfer. So council will have to approve that. The prior advances of $72,906.57 as a permanent transfer. And then we'll have to have a separate ordinance actually transferring $7,135.01 to this fund. After we do that, the fund will have a zero balance. There won't be any collections next year. And we'll eventually just eliminate this fund in the future, but we'll keep it open for another year for audit purposes. But I wanted to let council know that I will send you a copy of the second half settlement. I didn't do that. But I wanted to prepare a comparison between the first and second half of this year versus the first and second half of last year. There really shouldn't be that much change. The millage or the the assessed value stayed about the same as last year. So you're probably not going to see a whole lot of difference. But there was a slightly higher delinquency, of course, this year. So, but I will have that comparison for you at our next meeting. And that's all I had. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Finance Director?
John, our second half real estate was down how much again?
Well, in comparison to the first half, first half collections are always higher than the second half. But the first half was about 1.3 million gross. This one's about 934,000. It's comparable to, to prior years, but what I'm looking at is a comparison of first and second half versus first and second half of last year. As opposed to just comparing the first and second half of this year, because the second half is always a smaller settlement. But I think it is going to be somewhat smaller overall because of some of the delinquencies.
Okay.
John, did that delinquency exceed the 5% estimate?
No, it did not.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, now we'll move on to the Assistant Law Director, Mr. Newcomb.
Thank you, Mr. Arquero. No real report tonight, but I wanted council to know it's probably been about a month now. And since I've addressed you, the court and the city have the cooperation to take care of some security issues for the building. I just wanted council to know that I think it's working very well and pandemic or not. I, I think with the amount of people that do come in and out and with the pandemic going on, it's made City Hall much safer for employees and other people from the public coming in and out, including people from other agencies and everything too. So I just wanted to commend council and the courts for really pushing that through and getting it done so quickly. I really do think it's helped, at least from my time, a few days a week helping the city. So, thank you, Mr. Arquero.
Thank you. Yes, I agree and it's definitely, as a result of Judge Iroche's efforts, so long overdue and definitely needed improvement. Any questions for the Law Director? Okay, if not, we'll move on to reports of any standing commitments. Hearing none, any reports of liaisons? Okay, hearing none. Move on to our ordinances for this evening. We have a number of ordinances to address tonight. We begin with ordinances on the table. And that would be 55-20.
No update here on this. I think we leave it on the table until we get closer to that time and see if anything's going to change. The State Department of Health's direction to the County Health Department for special events, festivals and parades.
Okay, very good. Move on to our third reading ordinances, which we have two. And we will begin with ordinance 54-20.
An ordinance amending city codified-
An ordinance amending city codified ordinance number 1375.02 and not declaring an emergency.
Okay, Mr. Hockaday.
This is our residential rental inspection program and it closes a loophole regarding certain property purchase and acquisition methods. You know, the owner finance method that that is constantly referred to would now still require inspection. This has gone three readings. We've covered it in a couple of work sessions. I haven't heard any complaints. I haven't heard any correspondence to the antithesis that this shouldn't be required. And again, it just closes a loophole that allows people to skirt our current program. So I would recommend council pass this and I think this would address a major issue.
Yes, I did receive one positive comment from the person that brought this to our attention in the first place regarding land contracts. So they're very happy to see this loophole closed. Any other comments or questions on 54-20? Okay, if not, Mrs. McBoy.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 54-20.
Okay, there's a motion to act on ordinance 54-20. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mozio.
Mr. R. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 54-20 has passed. Move on to ordinance 56-20.
An ordinance authorizing use of golf carts and other low speed motor vehicles and not declaring an emergency.
Okay, we did talk about this at our work session. And we're going to acquire some tweaking. So, Mr. Emery?
I think I would like to table ordinance.
Okay. Pardon?
I thought Joe went mute. I thought he was still talking. Sorry.
You're muted, Joe.
I think he's having an internet connection issue.
Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I would like to table ordinance 56-20.
Okay, there's a motion to table ordinance 56-20. Is there a second?
I second. This is Ledford.
Second by Mrs. Ledford.
Mr. R. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 56-20 will be table. We'll move on to our second reading ordinances. And we have one in second reading and that will be 59-20.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an LED street lighting agreement with the Cleveland Illuminating Company and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Mr. Hockaday.
Okay, this is a new opt-in program with and what this allows them to do under the option that we've discussed is as metal halides, mercuries and sodium, high pressure sodium ballast fail within the city's current street lighting, that they will be replaced at no additional cost with an LED product. So if we engaged in prior programs with FirstEnergy and we requested that those LEDs be placed, each fixture would have incurred a $300 charge. If you go on the failure replacement program, they do not charge the additional $300. So it's kind of my recommendation to council that we enroll in this opt-in only program with FirstEnergy. So as these old Cobra head tied to the utility pole systems fail, whether that's a case bulb, photo eye, whatever the failure may be, that it would be replaced with an LED equivalency. I'm happy for any questions council may have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions regarding 59-20? All my questions have been answered. Mr. Hockaday, one thing. Is this a time sensitive thing? Do we need an emergency declaration on it?
Um, you know, I, we don't have to do it by emergency. But I think the sooner we get it back to them, the sooner we enroll in the program, the better. You know, we picked up on it very early before a lot of other communities have had a chance to see it. So you know, I would recommend we we get converted into the program sooner rather than later. But as far as, you know, there's no life or limit stake here. So you can either deal with it by emergency or you can put it into a third reading. Either either would be appropriate.
Okay, I see no reason to prolong it any further. So we'll just keep it as is as an emergency. So anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
Hey, Mr. Gah?
There is a savings with this converting, correct?
Yes, LEDs are simply more efficient than other types of lighting and the tariff rates, as they're known, are lower per fixture and equivalency. So it it will depend on the size of the fixture, what the price is, you know, whether it's a 250 watt equivalency or 100 watt equivalency, you know, there's variation in that pricing. But yes, generally speaking, they are all more cost efficient for the city than than any of the other alternatives.
Thank you.
My concern was with the light output. If we were getting apples to apples and the information that we received last week has satisfied that concern. So you have assignment on this ordinance, Mr. Gah, if you want to move forward with the declaration.
He's muted.
You're muted? Okay, now you're on. Now you're muted again.
I didn't hear you.
Um, you're you're assigned on this ordinance. So if you want to move ahead with declaration?
I'd like to declare ordinance 59-20 an emergency.
Motion to declare ordinance 59-20 an emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mozio.
Mr. R. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Gah, the emergency has been declared.
I'd like to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 59-20.
It's a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 59-20. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mrs. Ledford.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Gah, the rules have been suspended.
I would like to act on 59-20, ordinance 59-20.
There's a motion to act on ordinance 59-20. Is there a second?
I second Angel McBoy.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 59-20 has passed. Move on to our first reading ordinances and we have five in first reading. And we will begin with ordinance 61-20.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and finance director to execute a credit card agreement with Huntington National Bank in accordance with the city of Connyatt credit card policy and declaring an emergency.
Okay, either Mr. Hockaday or Mr. Williams.
Go ahead, John.
This is a part of the transition from KeyBank to Huntington Bank. We have a KeyBank purchase card. It's not necessarily a credit card. It's more like a short term revolving loan on a card. We pay it off every month. But in order to enroll in the Huntington Bank purchase card program, we have, they have to have an ordinance, council authorizing the city manager myself to sign the agreement. So it's pretty standard, fair, but we do need to do this relatively soon.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Williams? Now I'll entertain a motion to proceed.
This time I'd like to declare ordinance 61-20 an emergency.
There's a motion to declare ordinance 61-20 an emergency. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Emery.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Ledford, the emergency has been declared.
Yes, I'd like to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 61-20.
There's a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 61-20. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gah.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Ledford, the rules have been suspended.
This time I'd like to act on ordinance 61-20.
It's a motion to act on ordinance 61-20. Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't catch that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mozio.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 61-20 has passed. Move on to ordinance 62-20.
An ordinance to amend section 375.04 codified ordinances governing access roads to trails and not declaring an emergency.
Okay, as you know, we discussed in the center work session. This was regarding Underage Road. See in the the terminology there in the new ordinance, the changes. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion to move ordinance 62-20 to second reading.
There's a motion to move ordinance 62-20 to a second reading. We'll move on to ordinance 63-20.
An ordinance to amend chapter 179 of the Connyatt codified ordinances governing the cable television advisory board and not declaring an emergency.
Okay, Mr. Hockaday.
So there's a number of things and we discussed this at some of the length of at our work session, our last work session. As you, as you all know, we are going through some changes in how we have council needing to some known upcoming or forthcoming changes with Great Wave and they're moving to kind of more of a streaming service. It's not completely convert for maybe another 12 months, but a large portion of that conversion has occurred. And how we are going to adapt our cable advisory services and the public access that we provide for the city of Connyatt to offer transparency into a variety of our government operations and also a variety of shows, everything from the Sunrise Live with Jim Coco to those. So those offerings can be found by residents, not only on cable, but in public access, which we hope to continue, but maybe to broaden that spectrum to streaming and other services that are that are forthcoming. It's really just been fueled a great deal by, you know, COVID and some of the changes here that we've had to undergo in 2020. It's a really important service. So this makes a variety of changes. You know, to that, to that and allows us to kind of more rapidly react to some of those changes. You know, we've had a good relationship with cable advisory, the great volunteers, they produce a ton of original contents and we're going to have to continue to adapt and make changes. I would say the one structural thing is there have been two vacancies on that board for a long time. There's presently seven members. So we just, one of the amendments was to reduce the overall size from nine to seven, which is acceptable. Nine is a huge board. So and it makes the the contract employee also reportable to my office in terms of being able to work with them. And when we have instituted changes in the past, largely that's a discussion between Regis Galvin, the current contractor that serves the cable advisory board. And we're working on some upgrades for city council chambers right now. So hopefully when we're able to get back to more normalized meetings and still be able to stream and broadcast them. But we have five or six devices and other things connected in the same room without getting that horrendous echo feedback thing that happens now. So this just embodies some of those changes. I would advise you go ahead and move it to a second reading. That way, if there's any more review or comments, that that can be taken into account.
Is there any questions or comments regarding 63-20? Now I'll entertain a motion to proceed.
I'd like to move ordinance 63-20 to a second reading.
Hey, ordinance 63-20, we'll move to a second reading. Move on to ordinance 64-20.
An ordinance to create line item 25990159300 transfers and to appropriate $427,787 to said line item.
Hey, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. This is the the money that we received from the county for our, I believe it's a percentage of our local government funding last year for the coronavirus relief fund. In order to use this money, we're going to have to create a line item. And and it's going to be a transfer line item. As we've discussed before, we can't spend money from this line item, but any fund that spends money on COVID related items can be reimbursed from this fund via transfer. So once we establish this line item and council authorizes it, we can then transfer by ordinance actual cash to those funds that spent it for COVID. So this is just part of the budgetary process.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Williams?
John, I have a question. We don't have it listed here as declaring as emergency. So would this be something we would want to do probably this evening?
Budgetary, it's anything budgetary, we don't need to declare. Budgetary, it's anything budgetary, we don't need to declare an emergency.
Okay.
Any other questions on sixty-four dash twenty? Now I'll entertain a motion to proceed.
We're going to need to waive the three-reading on this?
Yes.
All right, I'm, I'll make a motion to waive the three-reading rule on ordinance sixty-four dash twenty.
So motion to suspend the three-reading rule on ordinance sixty-four dash twenty. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Carrow?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Mozio, the rules have been suspended.
Like to make a motion to act on ordinance sixty-four dash twenty.
So motion to act on ordinance sixty-four.
I second.
Second by Mr. Emery.
Mr. Carrow?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Hey, ordinance sixty-four dash twenty has passed. And we'll move on to our final ordinance, which is sixty-five dash twenty.
In ordinance to amend the 2020 budgets or appropriations and fund and interfund transfers attached here to and marked Exhibit A.
Okay, Mr. Williams, you're up again.
Uh, yeah, this is a part of the, the COVID monies that we plan on spending. We're planning on upgrading our COVID-related technology for computer hardware and software upgrades. Part of it is a new purchase order system, which would be paperless. We need to upgrade the finance package in order to do that. I'm also working with CMI and looking at upgrades to income tax and payroll. So we can also be able to take payments online for income tax as well as transmit returns electronically. Currently, we don't have the capability to do that. That would reduce the number of people that would need to come up here to the, to City Hall and reduce the potential exposure. And as far as the payroll side, right now we have timesheets and time cards and things of that nature that are paper-generated. Department heads have to come to City Hall to drop those papers off. So we're looking at an electronic system as well for payroll. But as soon as we get the pricing on that, we'll apprise council of it and and let you discuss it. Right now, the 50,000 is going to cover about 30,000 of the, the finance upgrades, about 30,000, 20,000 for the advanced, the advanced finance package and about 10,000 for the, the purchase order system. There, there are other upgrades and other departments as far as computers, printers, things of that nature that we'll also be using this money for. Once we spend the money, then that transfer line item that council just created will have another ordinance to reimburse the general fund from that COVID fund. But that will have to be done by a separate ordinance.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hockaday, do you have anything to add to this?
No, other than there's going to be more of these and they'll be across a variety of funds and departments for reimbursable items. We do have to have anything that we intend to utilize with this fund before council prior to October 15th. It must be encumbered and it must be completed and spent by December 15th. Any proceeds will be returned to the county auditor.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions regarding ordinance sixty-five dash twenty? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three-reading rule for ordinance sixty-five twenty.
There's a motion to suspend the three-reading rule on ordinance sixty-five dash twenty. Is there a second?
Angel McBoy second.
Mr. Carrow?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Ledford, the three-reading rule has been suspended.
This time I'd like to act on ordinance sixty-five twenty.
The motion to act on ordinance sixty-five dash twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gah.
Mr. Carrow?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance sixty-five dash twenty has passed. Complaints are ordered for tonight. We'll move on to unfinished and old business. Hearing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous business.
I would like to thank the Street Public Works for the quick response to Middle Road and the fire department when we had our mini tornado or downburst or what, but it was 30 seconds of chaos and they were here quick. Got the road open so the power company could get in and string up the wire that was blowed down. And I'd also like to thank Public Works for a quick turnaround on Underedge Road. They got out there quick and did a good job grading. Thank you.
Anybody else have any miscellaneous business? Okay, I did receive a call from the residents on Underedge Road as well, thanking the city for the quick response. And I did relay that to PW Director, Mr. DeBel. So and I would if you guys haven't had a chance yet, like Mr. Hockaday said, to stop out of Truck World, I did so on Saturday. It's a very nice facility. Quite roomy as well. So I think they did a fantastic job and thank them for coming into the city and taking the chance with us and I appreciate their business. And finally, I would just like to remind everybody once again that the census is due and it's very important to us and to the state. So if you could get your census responses in, that would be fantastic. Because they did decide to shut it down at the end of September. So they will no longer be doing any field inquiries at the end, by the end of September. So if you could get your census data in, that would be great. Anybody else have any miscellaneous business? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carrow?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledford?
Yes.
Mrs. McBoy?
Yes.
Mr. Moisier?
Yes.